You guys ready?
Yes.
Scary.
I'm ready.
Alright, we can go ahead and call the meeting to order. Mr. Pratt, Calvin Caldwell, please.
Jennifer Harden.
Here.
Jack Miley.
Here.
Belinda Grassi.
Here.
Tom Heck.
Here.
Steve Jeffries.
Here.
Alright, can all rise for the pledge, please. At pledge will be just to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On behalf of the board, I would like to welcome all students, staff, parents, and interested community members to tonight's Board of Education meeting. I would like to remind everyone that this is a meeting of the Board of Education held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is time for public comment during the meeting in the public participation section on the agenda. First up, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the September, or I'm sorry, from the September 10th special meeting and the August 28th forward meeting, if I get up a second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Heck. Is there any discussion? Alright, Caldwell, please.
Tom Heck.
Aye.
Steve Jeffries.
Aye.
Jennifer Harden.
Aye.
Jack Miley.
Aye.
Belinda Grassi.
Aye.
Motion carried. That takes us to special reports, Mr. Kales.
Yes, we have actually two. We have our stand and construction update from ICOM, but we also have Michael Douglas from Diversity Initiatives, who have been working with our district for the last couple of years, doing some professional development. We thought we would have him showcase some of the things that we're doing here at the campus and throughout the district. Mr. Douglas?
Okay. Thank you, Superintendent Kales. Thank you for the opportunity to present to the board. I'd also like to thank President Harden and Riverside Board of Education for the opportunity to present and talk about the work that I've been doing in the district. I prepared an update for you to take a look at. That's being passed out right now, dated September 25th, 2018. And really just to provide a framework, so that we talk about it, looking at it from the initiative, the beneficiary in terms of who benefited from the training, the date of the training, who it was championed by, and the developmental level. Now, the three developmental levels that we like to talk about are the transactional level, and that's at the very lowest level, where somebody will come to a diversity training, they came, they saw, they participated, they went back to their work area. Still an important area, but at the very lowest level. The transformational level is the middle level. That's where they come to something, they participate, and they actually have a change in thought when they want to conduct business, when they go back to their work area. And then at the highest possible level is the systemic area, and that's where real changes are made, and we are certainly at the very top of the level of trying to make those necessary changes in the district. One of the things that I thought about in preparing my remarks for the work that's happening here, and again, looking at my background, 25 years in the business, I've worked with a lot of school districts, a lot of corporations doing the work, public and private sector, small and very large corporations. I have to say that my work here, especially with 2017 and 18, in the Riverside local school district, was the highlight of my developmental year. What I've discovered here about the administration, now the board, the student body, and the teachers that make up this district, is that they were ready for this type of training, and they have been very engaged through the entire process. That does not happen all of the time. A lot of times, especially for the three areas that I represent, in terms of the work that I do, dealing with a lot of conflict mediation work, which is probably 75% of my work, fortunately, unfortunately, that there's some type of problem, I'm brought in to mediate work through those types of issues. And then there's the proactive and preventative side. I do need to say publicly here, I was not invited into this district because of any perceived or actual problem that was happening at the time. The administration expressed an interest in doing something that was proactive and trying to build upon what was already in place and helping the district get to the next level. So, we started out, if you take a look at the update, we started out doing a DLT meeting, with a full-day diversity and inclusion training, where district leaders representing all of the buildings that took place on December the 7th, we got together, I worked with your curriculum instruction person, and we started out with an interview. She asked me some softball questions, that led to, you know, some deeper thought, higher level questions, so that I was able to give them some back and forth about my background. It's a better way to introduce the concept, because a lot of times, when we're doing that type of training, one of the things that I always talk about, and I try not to let it hurt my feelings, but when people find out that they have to, are mandated to go to a diversity class, they'd rather have a tooth pulled with no notes. It's not something high on people's list of things that they really want to do. But we did it. I noticed that there was some, you know, form of tense and uncomfortableness in the beginning of the meeting, but as we started and we got into the activities, the interactive activities, there was a loosening and an understanding that started to, you know, permeate that room, that this is doable. I talk about a lot of uncomfortable things to talk about, people are, you know, sometimes tense, but the fact that we can have those conversations, get through those conversations, and wind up on the other side, that's where the growth comes in. From that meeting, we went to the next idea, because it was really an organic process here also, which I really appreciated. I don't come in with any preconceived notions. I have things that I put in place to figure out what needs to happen in the district, but organically, there was a pull for the services. We looked at two days. February the 6th, we did an all-day training for our middle school and high school staff, and again, trying to be creative, we went to Mentor Paradigm. I like field trips. Get people out of their comfort zone, take them someplace new and different, and we did a full-day training with the staff. The training that they encountered, again, people, when they hear a full-day training, they think, oh my goodness, can this guy talk for a full day? Well, I probably can, but I usually, you know, catch them off-guard and bring that comfort level down, and the intensity level down, because what they quickly find out is that I want them to join me in the conversation. We're going to do activities, we're going to do a lot of back and forth, and I believe in doing simulations also, because that's at the highest possible level of learning. And I have some students that are going to join me a little bit later, and they're going to share some thoughts about some things that we did last Friday. So we moved from our middle school and our high school group, to our second day was later in the school year in May, with our elementary buildings. We did a full-day training, and this time we went to the Auburn Career Center. Same identical approach, we got feedback from both groups, it said, we hit the mark, we had people engaged, and now there was an actual pull for the work. We transitioned from doing that work, from the full days, to going out to the elementary buildings. So I spent a full day there, and attended staff meetings, toured the buildings, do a look around of the physical plan. What do people forget, what does the building say to outsiders that are coming into the building? What does that warmth factor? So I gave them all of the principles, a lot of feedback, attended the staff meeting, and now we went from the macro to smaller, more intimate settings, where people would feel more comfortable with asking some of those difficult questions, in terms of dealing with difficult student issues, or parents that have been, you know, somewhat challenging from time to time. So we moved from that to finally, at our high school, we had a reluctant learner group, and we wanted to talk about that whole topic of, we know for a fact, in most of America's schools, and Riverside local schools is no different, that we set one heck of a table, and we have chairs around that table, the teacher's sitting at the very head of that table, and we invite the students to the table every single day. But, there's this phenomenon that happens here and other places, by, you know, virtual conversations I've had with staff, where if we look at this table right here, and there's 10 chairs here, two to three of those chairs are not filled. We have students that might be over by the window, a couple are under the table, some are at the light switch, and we can't figure out from time to time why they are not at the table. So we really use that as a metaphor of trying to figure out, what is it that we're doing? What can we do differently? And how can we get more students at the table? Because for a fact, we know what we're selling at this table. It's valuable, it's necessary, and it's good. So we, at the high school, we spent somewhere in the neighborhood of 20 to 25 hours under principal, we had the direction of working through some sessions over a period of time of answering that question. Here's the magic, and this is what doesn't happen very often, because I can think of two of my school district clients right now that I'm working with, that I've been there three or four years, and I'm still the guy in the front of the room, leading this charge by myself. The magic of what happened here, and it doesn't, I don't take this for granted, those seven teachers joined me this August at the front of the room, and they took the lead role in front of their peers of talking about the process and the strategies that they were going to put in place of how we could get more students at the table. So I stood there in amazement, and you know, and I'm, you know, again, I'm the guy that, you know, it's my turn and my opportunity to run that part of the meeting, so I kept wondering, am I going to have to jump in there? And they all came forward, they were prepared, they were committed, and you could feel the learning that took place on their part. So I gave them incredibly high marks for the work that happened there. So the next frontier, and this is where I'm going to invite the students that are with me this evening, if they'll join me. The next frontier is always the students, because that's why we're here, and that's why we're doing this work. I have three students that participated in our Project Mosaic workshop that took place this last Friday. Project Mosaic is an acronym that means molding our students to be accepting, insightful, and compassionate. And it's not a one-and-done, this is something that we do. We started the process here, this was my first foray into the student arena, I've been walking the halls and touring with the principals and seeing students all over the place, but it came time to finally set the date and actually do the programming. So I've invited them to share some of their thoughts with you, this is the best commercial for the work and what that was like for them. So I'm starting out with Gabe. Gabe Richner is an 11th grader. Gabe, what activities are you involved in here at the high school?
So currently, I'm in cross-country right now, and I'm planning on doing wrestling track later on. I'm also in NHS, I'm class president, and I'm also in the leadership class with MAC.
Great. Thank you for being here this evening also. So tell us, what will you take away from the Project Mosaic experience?
I think one of the biggest things I'll take away is how, like, blessed we are to have all these resources at our school, like our deputy and, like, just the community around us, because we watched a movie that kind of showed a school that didn't have that and how the students were, and it was rough, and it showed how their education suffered, their social life, and how, like, how much discrimination there was. And we don't have all that here, and that's great.
Alright, great. Next, we have Julia, 11th grader. Julia, what activities are you involved in here at the high school?
I'm involved in cross-country, and then I start track in the spring.
Alright, great. So same thing for you. What are you going to take away from the Project Mosaic experience?
Um, I think the biggest thing I'm taking away from this is, it was a real eye-opener that, like, not everyone's like you, and that you really have to be compassionate, and you can't, you gotta, like, you have to, like, watch what you say, because you never know what's going to hit home for someone, because we're all different. And then, like, it just really put, like, it just really opened my eyes to a lot of different things, because I never realized what was, like, going on.
Alright, great. Thank you. And Faith Peterson. Faith is new to the district this year from Mentor, and she's a 9th grader, so, you know, welcome to the district, and tell us what you're going to take, well, tell us what activities you're involved in first.
Um, I want to definitely join the track team this year, because I did track last year, and I thought it was pretty cool, and I want to keep that journey going.
And I'm glad you were able to meet some new friends. We got the track and the cross-country piece right here, and we made that connection for you already. So tell us what you're going to take away from the Project Mosaic experience.
So, like they were saying, it was really just eye-opening for, to get this, to do this experience, because with the movie we watched, it showed how, like, when they all were with their friend group, they were all just in certain spots, they didn't merge together and all become one, and that's different here at Riverside, because as I've seen, I've seen people merge together, become more friends with different people, and then not just their one little group, which I think is pretty good, because, like, they were saying, we're different, but we're all unique in our own little way.
Alright, great. Thank you. Faith, this time I'm going to lead with you with the second question. Which activity, going from your memory, did you enjoy the most?
So there was this role-play scenario that we watched, and we were able to, it was the 1-6-10 game, and if we would not say something, we would go to 1. If we would say, like, we thought we had, could say something, but we just didn't want to, or could, we would go to 6, but, and at 10, if we could say something, we'd go up to that person and say right away, we would go to 10. And I noticed no one in the group went to 1, which I thought is good for Riverside, because we all could stand up for each other, even if you don't know the person. It's good to stand up, even if not friends at all.
It was good practice, too, right? There were tough scenarios that you had to jump in. The actors I brought in, and then you had to figure out, what do I say in this moment? Because if you were standing at a 10, I expected you to start saying how you would deal with that situation. Alright. Julia, which activity did you get the most out of?
Um, I got the most out of this poster activity, so we had a bunch of posters on the wall that had different races and genders of that race. So we all went around the room and wrote down the first thing that popped into our heads when we heard that race or gender. And it was just really interesting to see, like, what people think about them, and then we talked about it together, and then it was just interesting, because we all had, like, it was like, we all had kind of the same, like, look on them, but some of them were different, and it was just really interesting.
Okay. And Gabe?
I was referring to Julia, I liked the poster activity. It was interesting to, like, go around and have to pick the first word out of your head, and it was kind of scary, because some of us, we have that stereotype and prejudice about other groups, and we don't want to say it, and we'll try to enlighten our words. And like, not all stereotypes are bad, and they don't also include everyone, they're not, like, complete. Because there are people I know who are in that category, who they might have these aspects, and they're really good, but other aspects they don't have, they're not like that.
Alright, great. Now I'm going to give you guys a little bit of reporter experience. I told you two questions, but I have another question. Exactly. And that, people do that to me all the time, so now I get a chance to do it to you. So that was Project Mosaic 1.0, and again, we never do things that are one-and-dones. We're coming back. Can I count on your continued participation and help in becoming ambassador right here at Riverside High School?
Yeah. Also, I want to see the rest of that movie, so.
Okay, then, I left you with a cliffhanger. I left you with, I did leave you with a cliffhanger.
Yes.
So that's a yes?
Yes, 100%.
Okay. And you do realize this is being recorded. I'm coming back. Because I thought for a second you were going to say, well, I'm coming back for the pizza. It was good.
Well, it was.
Yeah. But, we're going to come back, because again, we're counting on your ambassadorship, so let's give them a nice round of applause.
Good job, kids.
Yeah, excellent. I've been doing Project Mosaic, the full-day workshop, since 2007, was happy to, you know, get to a point, I didn't expect it to be this fast, because normally, you're trying to both build momentum, you're trying to create and build the infrastructure for you to get to that point, but like I said, the experience here with the level of engagement, the commitment from the administration to see this process through and to grow, has gotten us to the point where, at the high school, and certainly because you have that rarity of having 8th graders here, so that was a new first for me, having 8th graders participate in Project Mosaic senior, I have a Project Mosaic junior for the middle school, but that was the first time having them a part of this process. It was a great day. We're taking their feedback now, and here's how this works in terms of how they give back to their own school community. I'm going to take the compiled information and take it to the next staff meeting right here at the high school to share with them, because when I met them back in February of 2017, the poster activity that they talked about, I brought other schools, so they could see, and we have conversations based on how other students responded to those posters. Now they're going to have an opportunity to take in how their students, right here at Riverside High School, responded. So it winds up being a great full-circle process. The staff is already, they knew that this was happening, and they were, you know, I've bumped into a couple that have said, I can't wait to see how our kids responded to that activity, so that we can talk about it, because no two poster sets are the same, because they're, you know, different school populations, and it's a different time, so a lot of pop culture references pop up on those posters. So at this point, I'll make myself available for whatever questions you may have for me, and end the presentation.
Mr. Douglas, how long have you been in the district for? How many years now?
This district is going on, it'll be two years in December.
You said that you have seen positive changes. What changes have you have noticed since you've been here?
Okay. Now, are you speaking with the administration?
Yes.
Okay. With our administration, I believe that your administration is engaging the topic seriously, and I've seen positive forward movement on the openness to having this conversation. I want to give a little bit of background in me making that statement. There are certain school environments, because of the topic, whether we're talking about race, LGBT, socioeconomic difference, the list goes on and on, people are not comfortable having those conversations, they feel very threatened, there may be things going on in the district at that particular time, that lead them to a place that is just not a safe topic. That safety issue, I believe that we've pierced that veil, and we're having difficult conversations around hiring, around parent pushback that happens from time to time, and what are some of the specific things that we can do to keep our community whole and be able to deal with our day-to-day challenges that pop up?
Okay. So with the Mosaic, which is a great thing that you're doing here, with that in mind, with the minority, the Latino, the LGBT classification of individuals, anyway, with that group, the data that you have gotten, what have you recommended to our district?
In terms of the, well, the first recommendation will be to continue what we're doing. I'm in the process of compiling that information, because Project Mosaic was just this past Friday, the 21st, and so that information, I'm in the process of working with Melissa Malacher, your curriculum and instruction person, on setting up a meeting with the administration to talk about the results from that, so that we can figure out what are the next steps, because we want to utilize, the whole goal behind Project Mosaic is to build ambassadorship. It helps us help our school climate become a place that is more welcoming, and when we do have problems, we have kids to access that can help us from an information standpoint of view, as well as to be, you know, more hands at the table.
So you've been to many other districts in here, and
Yes.
With the demographics, 3%, and you don't see any minority educators in here, do you consider that an issue?
It is an issue. I believe that across the board, all schools need to see a diverse faculty and staff population, and do some work at the college level. It's a problem there also. So we're singing the same song, K through 16, and I do believe that a district like this, demographically and strategically, where you're located in proximity to the larger cities, you're going to have some challenges with getting some of the minority teachers here, but it's not impossible, but you have to be very intentional in the strategies that you employ to make that happen. Because I think you have a sizable Hispanic population that, you know, from time to time, that's where having them at the table faculty-wise, maybe administratively, you know, the list goes on and on, will help us in addressing some of those concerns, for things that culturally we're just not aware of.
Okay, thank you.
Can you tell me who the seven teachers were that took charge?
At the high school? I'm going to go from memory right now, and I hope I don't butcher anybody's name right now. Ray Rotino. This is, this is the hard part. Is this Julia Oss here?
No, he's not.
That's Chris. Chris.
I will email those to you. I don't, I don't want to.
Robin Sterling.
Mr. Oberfield.
Was over there.
Oh, Burgerfeld?
Oh, Burgerfeld. And I feel bad, because I mean, so many people, and I have the list, I just didn't bring it with me this evening, but I will email that to you later this evening.
I was actually impressed you remember a lot of the names already, because you've dealt with a lot of people, you've interacted with our staff, our kids.
Yeah, I'll get you that list for sure.
Thank you.
Yeah.
One of the things I wanted to point out, last year, there was some discussion at the table, that after we received our state report card results, we were really concerned about the gap closing grade of an F last year, and it's one of the things we tried to do, is bringing in Mr. Douglas to help us try to reach some of the disengaged students, and that grade actually went up this year to a B. So we went from an F to a B, and we're very happy about that, and want to continue that progress.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Before we move to the next presentation, kids, if you want to go, I know you've got homework.
Yes. I just, I just wish we could. Be happy and proud of it.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys. Good job.
Thanks for having us.
Chris, want to talk over about the project?
Yes. You're going to forgive me, I'm going off memory right now, I've been out of town all day, on a family matter, and I just got here right for the tour. Madison Elementary, all slabs are poured, Masonry is 99% complete in the, in Area D, which is your gymnasium cafeteria. We poured the kitchen floor, and we have a main bearing wall, it's being built now, it'll be done within a week. Area C is all complete slab-wise, Masonry's going up, anticipating precast concrete planking coming at the end of this month, or, I'm sorry, middle of next month, to start the second floor there. Area B should be complete, weather permitting, this week. If we don't lose more than tomorrow, we should be done by the end of the week with that. We'll be looking at getting our precast planking installed there and start building the second floor, and we're also looking at waiting to hear back from the factory, we're looking at getting our roof joists for all of Area D to start coming in at the end of next month, to start getting the roof in that area. We've also completed installation of the tanks for the treatment facility. I'm sure you're aware of the one issue we have with the tank, Norwalk Concrete was very responsive on that. There is just some oops that happened in the manufacturing process, it was repaired on-site, with the collar being poured around that to tie it in place. They went over and above and sealed all those tanks with an injectable sealer that reacts to water, including the sealing outside, so there should not be.
Chris, excuse me. Regarding that seal, how long is that warranted for? Because it seemed like there was, it was an ongoing problem, and it had to be resealed a few times, and
Well, that wasn't sealed like that. All they did was they put a sealer, they used a, it's almost like, I want to say like the drought sealer they used on there, and then they, they put a waterproof flashing on the outside. It's, I don't think it was ideal with the water table that we have. What they did with this injectable sealer, there will not be an issue with what's there. So we have that, and including the waterproofing on the outside, so there will not be an issue with it.
What we see in the photos from the Laura Kramer Coons Consulting is a die, is that to make sure that once they seal
Yes, that way if that's, that tank leaks, it's not mixing with that groundwater, we could tell. Then that's how we found out, that one tank had failed in one location. They were supposed to, I think, finish the injection sealing today, I do not know whether they did, like I said, I was not here until this evening. I will know that tomorrow, but I'm sure that had taken place, and they would have backfilled to a backfill, and they would have tested everything one more time. to a backfill and they would have tested everything one more time. They started their piping in between the tanks.
When you talk about the injection sealing, that's where the defect was and you...
No, that's all along, those tanks are in two pieces though, so top of the wall.
Okay, so you did the same.
And in that joint, they'll physically drill approximately half the width of the sidewall and then that injector goes in there and seals itself off and it just starts pumping in there and it's all injected in the cracks and it's water activated. As soon as water hits that, it just goes. So, and if water doesn't hit it, it sits there waiting for it. And then you should not have an issue with that whatsoever. And Concord, that's moving along. We have Area D again, is, everything is complete except for the one bearing wall in the kitchen where we're waiting to pour the floor on that. That'll probably happen a week after next. Area B is poured, Area C is prepped. They should be pouring tomorrow unless they had an issue today. If not tomorrow, they will pour by Thursday, but with the weather tomorrow, they'll tend to give, whether that happens, the masons are in Area C, moving right along, and they also started in the classrooms in Area B, so that's moving right along. We will start probably later next week in the back five acres where the SDS field goes, start clearing back there. The remainder, we met with Hess and Laura and Scott Merritt, contractor, to get that laid out so they know the exact driveway that we have. We should see that happening out there also. That's moving right along. Also, we're expecting precast for that in Area C the week after Madison receives her...
Can you describe the precast for people who might be listening?
What we have for your second floor, there's two things you could have. You'll see a steel roof, steel floor joist that would go in place and you put the metal deck, almost like you would see the metal deck on the roof. And long and short of that, concrete's poured on top of that. That forms your second floor and you go up. Quite time consuming. What we have on your projects are precast concrete planks. They are 10 inches in thickness. I don't remember the width, dimensions of the width, but those will sit, span, heated together, grouted together, and that will form your entire second floor.
So they sit right on top of the masonry wall?
They sit on, they bear on the masonry wall. They bear, I think it is three inches onto the masonry walls on each side and how we looked at for the rebar to come up between it so everything was tied in together. That allows us to set the planks, make grout, we're on it the next day building masonry. And then we'll come back after the roof's on and a two-inch structural topping's poured on top of that, so it'll look just like the floor you walked on this evening. We won't know that it's precast plank unless you're looking for it from underneath and you will see the planks.
Right.
Very good system and sound wise too. It's a, it's a, it's a big benefit.
What's keeping you up at night?
You asked me that question.
I'm going to ask you that every single meeting.
Weather and just manufacturers, it is so busy out there. There's not one single job that the guys I talk to where it's something. I know frame, door frames were a big issue. Fortunately, we've finally got a lumber theory, so we're going to get those installed. The joists, that's a big, that keeps me up at night manufacturer because it's not even an issue throwing money at them because it's...
Do you guys have an expediter or anybody who's keeping in contact with them or...
We're keeping in contact with them, myself, my superintendents. It's, I'm making a real pain in the behind of myself because at least I could be the squeaky wheel. Whether that helps, at least they're not forgetting about me.
Chris, can you give us a quick update on where we are with the pricing for the learning tariffs?
That is out. We have that out to our contractors to get some hard pricing. That is coming along. Had conversations with a few of them yesterday and several this evening on my way in. There's going to be, there's still some questions out there. We've got to get our FIs, the architect, things are unclear. So we're working on that. I'm pushing to get that...
Do you think we'll have it within three weeks?
Oh, yeah, from now? Oh, absolutely. I'm pushing to get it. I'd like to get it to you next week sometime if I can. I just want to make sure I have everything and there's nothing left. And that's why we have some questions, just to make sure we've, that all the things are clear. The one thing I do ask is, when we had our core meeting, we were submitting that to the county. I had a conversation with the county about something else and I brought that up and they do want to see that, so I think that's, we need to follow up to make sure if anything, how he is doing that or has done that.
Any other questions?
Thanks for the tour.
Yes.
And it was great.
I'm sorry you had to drive up for just that. Sorry I missed it.
Yeah. It was, it's really great. I just want to make a statement to the public that we have, we have solid, those are solid buildings. I mean, like all that masonry, that is rock solid.
You have rocks out there. So I was just going to say, it's rock solid. It's not, you have really good buildings out there. And the last Fanning Howie, Fanning Howie building they did like this was Louisville. They did their new PK5. That's the same exact building we're doing with the precast planking and everything else. She's solid.
That's awesome.
Awesome.
And I did ask Chris to kind of go through the change orders. There's about 14 change orders on the agenda tonight. It's a summary sheet that I, one short that I gave Chris, wanted to kind of give us a quick overview of what those are in case there are any questions because I have my crystal leave and then we get the buildings and grounds and then you look at me and go, "Explain this to me," and I go, "Well, I think it's this bad." I don't want to provide any of the changes, so just let Chris kind of run through.
Just go run through?
Yeah.
Okay. Change order number six, which is delete detail 14S over 306. That is a detail that the engineer had, he added that in Addendum number five, which remember we had bid and then we kind of had a mini rebid with some value engineering items. He added a detail in Addendum number five which had, I'm just trying to keep it very simple, a bent deformed rebar that was to be post-installed into the precast planking to come out to accept the masonry walls and that, which is just, it could not be done with the precast. They realized what they did and that, well, it could be done, but at great expense, you could see it. It raised the price over $20,000, the precast. They in turn deleted that now, so that's the credit you're seeing where it's probably about 21, 22 toll between the two buildings.
Yeah, it's $10,096 per building. One for Concord on top, masons on the bottom. So it's two change orders, but you know, it's the same.
They're exactly the same. The next one, that's top for that, that will be Concord adding two water main bores. That's out on Concord Hampton. The engineer originally had us open cutting across there. ODOT did not want that, would not allow that. So that is the credit for an open cut and a cost to bore which is extremely expensive and with, especially with all the rock. So that's what you have.
So, and that's for a utility?
That's your two water lines to create a true loop coming into the building because you have to have a loop with your fire line because if you lose one, you have to be, you don't quite have that at Madison because you only have one way in, but you still have a loop. Concord, you'll have a true loop. You'll have two taps out on the other side of Concord Hampton that run in and connect. So you always have water coming in if you should move something or have to turn it off. So you do have two taps.
Thank you.
Revised location of First Energy Service, again, that is at Concord. Originally, the architect had assumed that First Energy was going to put a new pole and service line coming in. It would be the southeast end of the project, right by the detention or sediment basin. The First Energy wanted nothing to do with that because bringing their phasing in, so that moved up to the south drive there. You'll see the pole. By doing that, we originally, we were going to run, if we had it in the original spot, we were going to run right up the property line, which is just in a grassed area, and then cut over to the building without any pool boxes because we would be able to sweep very minimal pavement we would go under. Now where it's moved, we're just about 100% under pavement, which is premium fill all the way up to the top and installing a $6,500 pool box for First Energy because now we're tight and have to make the turn in there. So that was the additional cost required to get the pathways in for the electrical service from First Energy. The next one, revising panel schedule breaker sizes, that was just due, that's a very small change order, was just upsizing some panel breakers to higher average breakers, not much of anything there. Duck book revisions, that was for air handler three, if I'm not mistaken. That was also through some little process. It was, it's a $0 change order because what they were changing and what they were adding, it was just, it was a wash. Relocation of refrigerator water lines, that's at both projects. The engineer missed bringing those lines in and down the wall and also installing the wall boxes so you don't have any, everything running outside the wall. That wasn't a large change order today. It was $600 for each project. And replacing pressure independent control valves, that was with standard balancing valves. That was a V item that the engineer came up with throughout the, just with some of that. Doesn't affect quality or anything on the project, so, and that's a credit. What is different over at Madison? Something to be different would be, I think that is change order MO8 for $27,000, adding a temporary sediment basin or trap and some sanitary inverts. At Madison, your sediment basin is way out at the front of the project. We cannot, as you see how high we are there, when we started out there, there's no way we could drain out there. County was not going to let us do anything until we can get our cell going somewhere. So the engineer had a design along that side of the property line, a temporary sediment basin swale that we put in there to allow all of the runoff to go into there for that point, along with some revisions that the county had as far as their utilities and the water and that also. We talked about the panel breakers, that was the same. The next one, which is 10, I think, for $10,000, grading along the west side of the project and a six-inch fire line. The six-inch fire line, again, how he was telling you, the line comes in and then makes a loop back into itself. The engineer had a design where that loop comes through the existing building to connect that again, while obviously the existing building's there, we can't do that. The county was not going to let us energize the line, would not let you move in to the building, so we had to get them to reroute that away from the building so we can get that installed, and that was the cost to do that. And then the grading along the west side, there was, there are so trees in that, they were never slated to be removed there and their grading plan didn't work without those being removed. They didn't want to remove them, so they changed the grading along. And that, that's very minimal cost on that change order there. And that's it for them.
Basically, most of our change orders and the big dollar change orders are coming with the initial parts of the construction, right? I mean...
Yeah.
I wouldn't anticipate big changes coming later after you're starting to do interior work.
No, no. Your big ones are with your site and that's what those are. Here you have...
Because you encounter unanticipated stuff then?
Yeah. Like the water main bores, that, that's kind of a punch to the ribs there with that, but you're not going to argue with ODOT. It's their road. They don't want an open cut, so you would pay for it one way or another on that. So you'll see that with the site. That's usually where that, when you get into the building, it's pretty much going to be, you'll see minor changes usually because, in design errors, but probably the majority of change orders, if we have anything substantial, it's something that you're changing or you want to add. I guess you're absolutely right.
So unexpected stuff, we should be pretty close to being done with that since we're in the ground and building, and there might be a few tweaks, but at this point, we don't, you don't foresee anything in the hopper that's going to be a major expense that's unexpected?
No. But I didn't see...
There's only so many areas that we need to, where the excitement might be.
No, I mean, there's nothing that pops out at me, but it's...
Other than potentially the treatment process in Concord might...
That's, I mean, knock on wood, that one should be where not, we have a wide water issue out there, but not like here, we're dealing with rock out there and, you know, that's going to be more of a de-watering issue of, you know, drilling some holes in a five gallon bucket and dropping your stump down there to keep it dry. It should be, so we shouldn't be running into that where we're not digging anything else out there for that because all the mounds are built on top of the ground. So we should be pretty safe, but we, you know, I'm not...
I'm not even more guaranteed, but I'm just trying to, I know you've been through this before in your crystal ball. Is there anything that it's, how about, is there anything in the future that's going to keep you up at night?
Oh, gosh. No. I mean, there's nothing I can, it's like that tank, the issue with that, I've never had that issue happen, but it happens and it was nobody's fault. It was just something that happened in the manufacturing process.
Okay. That's my question. Thank you.
But we're, just, you have to remember, we're out of the ground, we're, our digging's pretty much done. We're not running in unsuitable soils anymore because, you know, we're digging everywhere and saying, "Oh, my gosh, you know, we have to mitigate all this." You've got your big items, which are road crossing done, so that kind of, the larger change orders you're going to see now are most likely what changes in the journey.
Right. So strictly optional.
But, yeah. So, and back to your question, what keeps me up at night, site work always keeps me up at night because that's, that's always the answer.
Okay. Thank you.
And for those keeping count, just to kind of go over the sheet I gave you, the first page is what the change orders look like if we approve everything tonight, the second page was just what I provided last time. So just to kind of go over real quick, the total change orders, assuming everything's approved tonight for Concord's at $95,965. The total change orders for Madison's $123,000 in change. So I put this at the total, $219,000 in change orders. We had set aside $600,000 for owner contingency for those change orders, so there's still $380,000 left for additional change orders that goes into the budget update, which I'll give later in my report.
Thank you.
And as far as outstanding change orders that we're aware of, there's just some tweaks to the foreign entrance, some of the windows, finalizing the pricing on that, obviously learning tariffs, and then we were getting a price just to switch the wood mulch to the rubber surface, possibly, and moving the scoreboard and gymnasium, which probably shouldn't be a whole lot in. And then there's the relocating the downhill sign at Concord because it's being drawn. We have to move that, so there's...
I want to...
That one's only...
Half decent though, too. The second part of the sanitary installation that we were proceeding T and M on due to the water and with the excavation of concrete, that's pretty much going to be no cost.
Okay.
So that's where that ended. That was my sneaking suspicion, that's where it's ended up, so that'll be, there won't be any added costs for that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else for Chris before we go?
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Much appreciated.
Drive safe.
I was hoping to see them, put signs in front, like we do here at Riverside.
Madison, I kind of want to...
I was just curious. I was just asking if we're having signs like we have out here at Riverside in front of our schools. I don't remember.
Was Madison getting one or was this getting wired for one? If you remember. That's, we could...
I'm just curious.
I feel like it was not. And I think part of it was Madison Avenue. I'm not sure that we can put the digital sign there. Because of the locate, because it's in a neighborhood, you know, like it's right. It's so close. I feel like we had that conversation, don't quote me, but I feel like they're not getting digital signs.
Yes.
I don't know if Jim or Jack remember that conversation about the digital signs.
No, and I'm usually pretty good at thinking about those things.
Okay.
I think those are special reports.
Super. All right, it takes us to old business if anybody has anything. Okay. Or new business. All right. Checking those off. Next one, Board of Education Committee and Liaison reports. Superintendent's Business Advisory Liaison, we have our first meeting October 10th at 7:00 until 8:30. You know, Chris Bassett sent out the email to everybody inviting them, so hopefully we have a nice turnout for that.
Who are you?
I'm right here, I'm number six.
Okay.
You ready?
Yeah.
Curriculum and Programming, we had a work session on nine, 10, so that was several hours, so I'm not going to report anymore on that. Oh my gosh, that was several hours.
And anyhow, we are looking at several different things with regards to curriculum and getting feedback and those kinds of things, so that's, that does that. Boosters, I attended a meeting on September 18th. Good news is, many of the elementary PTOs and PTA are doing a lot of great things, still keeping with some traditions of father, daughter dances, mother and son activities, spirit wear, bookwares, educational programming, supplying transportation for field trips, all those kinds of things are still on the table. Discussion a little bit about leftover funds and where it's going to go. Right now, it seems to be the theme is going to be per capita, wherever the kids end up after we redistrict. Not a lot of money, but a good bit of money to be a good seed money for especially the two new ones. We're going to keep two of the PTOs licensing or...
Yeah, what we decided to do, you know, we discussed with the whole group because it was kind of the question of should they start two new PTOs, you know, or, you know, go through all the legal legwork to do that, or take two that are existing and just kind of rename to whatever the new building or rename. So what we kind of decided was Madison Avenue would most likely continue as Madison Avenue, and then Leeway would most likely take over the Concord facility, and then kind of figuring out what to do with HAD and HALE with their funds and, you know, even with Mel Ridge and Buckeye because those populations are shifting around, so we kind of talked about how do we figure out, try to keep the money, if they follow, you know, the students for where they go, but at the same time not leaving, leaving funds to continue operating and just kind of figure out how that is. And I think that, you know, there's a lot of different ways you can go about it, and at the end of the day, it's never going to be perfect, but we're going to try our best to make it equitable and, you know, make sure everyone's in a good place to continue on, and then just dissolve the two extra groups and those funds will funnel either to other groups or to the district and figure out how we're going to use those funds. But once the redistricting's done, then we'll have further conversations on how that might look.
Once the redistricting is done, is that when you're, are we going to help them, I guess, like get new boards in place and things like that and facilitate meetings so they kind of know how?
Actually, the principals are working on doing that and bringing in even some activities where they're shared, activities in the spring.
Cool.
So the kids are working at the different schools and participating with the kids that are there, and again, because it's going to affect a lot of people, and so they're looking for ways to blend it way ahead of time.
They always have officers that are going to come off anyways, regardless of what's happening, so it's kind of, gives them an opportunity to fill those positions that we organize to whoever that population is.
Yep. So, a lot of good things going.
Super. Thank you.
One thing I want to mention also with curriculum, I believe you sent out an email to the board with a rough draft of what that curriculum survey looks like.
You did?
Did you?
Well, it was in the product, wasn't it?
You have one.
So, we just asked that you take a look at it and if there's some suggestions that you would like us to consider, just try to get back to us by Friday if all possible.
Okay, so, you know, which, because I mentioned...
It was last week's Friday, just as past Friday.
I'm going to send myself an email. Yes, ma'am.
I can send Nick inside the office to print out.
Yeah, if you, I was going to say, if you want hard copies or I can go and do it. So you have it with you?
Sure.
I'll go do it right now. I'd rather you had it so it was easier to access.
Hardly forget that way. Anything else?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay, thank you. It takes us to Finance and Audit Personnel Strategic Plan.
Okay, so we had a meeting on the 13th, which was just a few days after our last work session, but we had a work session for, we had a finance personnel meeting on the 13th of September, 7:30. We talked about a number of topics, didn't get through the entire agenda because it was lengthy, and determined that we could discuss it at our next finance meeting, which is in October. But we did talk about the joint financing district and the levy that we have on the ballot, or that will be on the ballot at some point in 19 or 20. And we talked about the renewal, and we talked about the timing of that and who's going to be affected and whether or not it might be beneficial for us to start considering being out on our own for that levy, based on how the tax is collected and who gets the money and the, so, it's complicated, and so there's going to be further discussions with the four districts that are involved in that, and we'll see what happens there.
It gets complicated with the allocation of funds between the four districts and with the devaluations of the power plant. Certain communities have had more growth than others, it changes the way the funds get allocated, so we're kind of looking at, are we getting our fair share or not, and, you know, what proposed changes we should make for that, if we continue that or do something on our own, or just kind of figure out what that might look like.
And we have, valuations are this year.
It's the reappraisal year, so we'll have...
So we'll have new valuations, and so that will, that will definitely affect what we collect as well. So, you know, once that information comes through, I think we will have more information and better information so that we know what we should propose going forward.
And the four districts have met previously, and that was one of the things that we, you know, we all recognize that there needs to be some type of reallocation of the funds. I was noticing we wanted to wait till the new valuations come out to see how that changes things to understand.
I'll tell you how it changed.
Yeah, so, so that was that. We also talked about EMIS and the fact that we're using LGCA for our EMIS services right now, and whether or not that's working out in our, in our favor or not. So we may be changing the way that we approach EMIS as a district as well. We used to have it in-house, we moved it to outsourced, and now we may be considering moving it back in-house, but we're not sure yet how that's going to look. So we talked about that. And EMIS, the reason we talked about it in Personnel and Finance is because reporting in EMIS is, most of what goes on in EMIS is student reporting, and that's how we get a lot of our funding. So everything is, everything is EMIS reported to the state of Ohio, and that's how the state determines how we get our funds. So it's an important issue, it's an important, it's an important aspect of what goes on in this district, and so that was, we had that conversation, and I'm sure we'll have that conversation again before something is recommended to the district. We talked briefly about recycling in the district, and they're looking into that a little bit more. And we have the exempt handbook, which is on the agenda today for approval. We talked about the final changes that were in that handbook, and everybody has a copy of that. So, our next meeting is scheduled for October, hold on, because I have my calendar here. October 17th at seven, 7:00 AM, if anybody wants to join us at 7:00 AM.
No, thank you.
Yeah, just saying. So, we don't have an agenda for that meeting yet, and then as far as the strategic plan committee, I don't know, I haven't, I haven't, we haven't been, like, the board hasn't been too involved in, or been asked to be involved yet, and...
We need to jumpstart with our central office administrative team.
Yeah, so it would be helpful if we would, like, at some point be, you know, asked to join.
One of the things I want to mention, going back to the joint financing district too, there's some very serious discussion going on between Lake County Educational Service Center and Geogga's Educational Service Center about combining the organizations to make one. There's a lot of talk last couple of years, but it was actually brought up as an agenda item at our last monthly superintendent's meeting of Lake County and Geogga County superintendents. So they actually bring it to the table to discuss it, tells me that it's something that they're considering and that they should be considering possibly combining their efforts. That won't change anything with the financial...
Yeah, because Lake County ESC is the fiscal agent who's the, you know, the taxing district basically, and the funds, the county sends them the funds and they disperse the funds to us based on that allocation.
Yeah, there's a lot of moving parts when it comes to the ESCs and the joint financing district, and, you know, we contract with the ESCs for a lot of services as well, so that, I would imagine we'll have further conversations on that. Other than that, I have nothing else.
All right, thank you. Buildings and grounds, operations, I'll just leave it, Mr. Heck.
Sure, so we had a meeting on our balance September 10th, discussed, we do meet on a monthly basis with Chris just to make sure we have two touch points between the board and what's going on with construction, so if there's any major changes, we have our finger on the pulse. We also talked about a lot of the things that were done in prep over the summer and in prep for the start of school, and how we have moved forward with that. So, Mr. Wayne, I turn over the floor to you, I know we had a good start, but a lot of that was because of the planning and the work that happened over the summer.
Right, we finished all of our summer projects. We're down to just a couple right now, where we're looking at replacing some dugout roofs. Talked to a couple of companies today, that's one of the last items on my agenda. Windows all washed outside, had a little issue after I went through and looked at everything. I'm having the company come back, they missed a pretty good sized section at Lammouth. Other than that, right now, we're in pretty good shape. We've got a lot of our paving issues taken care of outside, we're going to have some areas restriked in the parking lot to make it a little bit more easy for people coming in and out of our building. And right now, we have every, all systems going, all the buildings.
Good. And I know we're, you know, we use the term dry safe and warm for the buildings that are going to be closed, and Winter's just around the corner, and is there anything keeping you up at night with regard to that?
No, my biggest thing that was keeping me up at night was that auditorium, to get that repaired and ready to go, and we had quite a few community members in over the weekend, and we heard a lot of positive comments about the school, the grounds, and again, about the auditorium, which I shared with Mr. Rios, and it was real positive.
Just for the parents who have children in choir or band or other things that come to use the auditorium, I think that everybody will be impressed when they walk in compared to what it was, which was fine, but we moved it from a fine to a really, really nice facility.
Well, I walked through it every day to my office, and I just said I couldn't take it anymore. It was like that driveway coming down the road where we had to get a few things taken care of just because that's what everybody sees when they enter Riverside, which is pretty complete right now, and auditorium, and we did some painting at the high school here, it made a big difference. And again, I'd like to make one comment, and then I'm going to be quiet. I'd like to thank the board for 23 great summer workers. Had no issues, kids were fantastic, I'll call them young adults and not kids, but they did a great job of getting some things done that we wanted to get done with our hallways, so pretty happy about it.
Terrific. The next Building and Grounds meeting is on October 15th, and that'll be at 4:30 in this room.
Excellent.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Jeffries, Policy Committee and Alumni Association.
There was a policy meeting on September 5th, we discussed the twelve policies that are on the agenda for this evening, and there's nothing new to report under the Alumni Meeting Association.
Sure, it's late. It's all coming on, all right?
It is, yeah. We have the Alumni Hall of Fame is the 13th of October at Quill Hall.
I think Class of 83 has a reunion this weekend, because I know some people in the Class of 83, and I'm going to hang out with a few at another game.
Okay.
You going to the game?
I'm going to the game. I will be playing, I will be shooting out, but I'll be, I'll be in the stands.
I was going to say the brass could usually, but they don't.
I'm going to play in the band.
All right, very good. Mr. Kayla, Superintendent's Report.
Okay, one thing I wanted to mention is that Chris Easley's not here, and he's not giving me any indication that this, that we're not going to be able to open on time, right? So I want to make that clear. But considering all the talk about all-day kindergarten, I wanted to make sure that if something were to happen catastrophic, where we'd have to delay the start, that we would have enough space in our existing buildings to have all-day kindergarten. And the answer to that question is yes, we do. Okay, so, on the board agenda tonight, we do have all-day kindergarten. We did re-review the current space, and we have ensured that there is enough room to house all-day kindergarten for next year. If the kindergarten numbers remain consistent, you know, if they're very similar to what they, next year was what they are this year, we'll need an additional three classrooms district-wide and four teachers. That's what we're looking at right now. And we already have one elementary teacher and two high school teachers that have already committed to retiring. And we also have a projected reduction of, in combined buildings, in terms of efficiency, like we've been saying all along, that not only will we have new schools, but we'll be a lot more efficient in our delivery of services, is the fact that we'll have a reduction of around five teachers, elementary positions once we move into the new buildings. That will offset some of the people who will now move into some of those open locations.
And we would have some changes while in the administration, correct?
Yes, we're looking at that right now, we're trying to decide what is an optimal number to have two administrators in one building. We're going to have one elementary school that's going to have over 500 people and kids in it, so that will be one that will be asking the board to have two administrators. The other one will be around 450. One of the things we want to send out, Nick put this together, we haven't sent it out yet, I just wanted you to see it before we do, but tomorrow, we are going to make it official that Riverside intends to implement all-day kindergarten for next year. We've received a couple of calls, we just want to be out in front of this so people can make plans for next year.
Excellent.
All right. So, I got a call from the construction manager for the cell tower, and from what I understand, construction will begin tomorrow. That's what I'm told.
Okay.
All right?
We believe you.
So because it's been such a long time, I was trying to remember the terms of the contract. So, I got together with Gary, and he has some information here, just wanted to refresh the board's memory on why we decided to allow a cell tower to be built on our property. And it's an annual allowance of the space, and it's in terms, every five years, the amount increases by 15% for the next five years. In other words, for the first, first year through the fifth year, we'll receive $19,800 a year. So that five-year term, we'll have earned $99,000. Okay, that's for the first five years. Year six through 10, we'll earn $22,770 per year, for a total of $113,850 for that term. Years 11 through 15, $26,185.50 per year for that term, five-year term, it'd be $130,927.50. Year 16 to 20, $30,113.33, that five-year term will generate $150,566.65. Years 21 through 25 is $34,630.32, for a term of $173,151.60. And years 26 through 30 is $39,824.87, for a term of $199,124.35, for a total of $866,000, over, $866.620.10. So if you average it all out, every year that we have the cell tower there, we're getting $28,887.33 in essence. And that's not counting any additional carriers that they may put on there, because that's going to be another $300 a month for those carriers. So, hopefully they'll get it up, from what I'm telling, what they're telling me right now, completion time is going to be somewhere between as early as Thanksgiving and as late as Christmas. Again, this is what they're telling me. So I'm not guaranteeing anything. Also, our last board meeting, we talked about sponsoring lacrosse, which we're moving ahead. I do have a meeting tomorrow with the coach and the booster group that supports that group for... I do have a meeting tomorrow with the, the coach and the booster group that supports that group for girls. We're still working out an MOU with the RLEA and we have some more things to do. I wanted it on this board agenda, but it looks like it's gonna be on, in October. Also, Gary will be talking about an RFQ they's putting together, which is a request for qualifications for the anticipation of our second phase of our facility plan. As the board knows, this phase will allow the construction of the 612 complex on the Riverside campus, allowing us to eventually convert Lamuth into an elementary school and then decommissioning the two last old schools that we have in Buckeye and Melry. Being part of the expedited local partnership program is gonna allow us to eventually receive credit of around 11 or 12 million dollars to make that conversion of Lamuth into an elementary school. These events, if eventually we put a bond on and it passes, would allow us to be where the results were from the OFCC audits of 2008, 2013, which the professionals basically said, looking at all our buildings and all the shortcomings because of their, their old buildings, was to keep Lamuth and get rid of all the rest. You know, as the board was trying to move forward in a, in a responsible manner, you know, we couldn't ask for all of it at once. At least we didn't feel like we could at the time. But it would allow us to do it in a couple of phases. Well, the first phase has been approved and we're looking forward to having those buildings open. Now we're starting to look towards the second phase and at least be prepared that if the board decides to put it on the, on the ballot, we'll be ready. We're also gonna take a look at Olmsted City Schools to tour their new building, which is the same as what we're looking at, a 612 complex. And we have that tour scheduled for late October, which I believe is the 24th.
October 24th is the day after the board meeting at 10 a.m., meeting at the middle school portion of the complex.
And one other thing, we talked on it a little bit today about the learning terrace. We're waiting for the actual pricing of learning terrace. And I know there's been some discussion with the Excellence for Education Foundation about maybe helping us out in terms of providing some significant funding to help offset some of the costs of that if we decide to go in that direction. I don't wanna get into too much detail until we get more information. And I also wanted to pass this out. I know there was some discussion over the last couple of years about administrative evaluations, who does them and not where we are in terms of a contract. And Chuck had put this together and I just thought I'd pass it out to the board to give you an idea where all our administrators are in terms of their contracts and who is evaluating who. And that concludes my report.
Okay. Alright, Mr. Black, are you up?
Alright, got several items tonight here, those slides. Wanted to go over a few agenda items just because we made some tweaks to the agenda since Friday. So I wanna make sure that everybody's on the same page and understood some of the maybe unusual items that appear on our agenda tonight. So first couple of things. There's a, a resolution here to approve me as the records officer and the board's delegate to go to public records training. This is in response to a verbal audit comment when they were asking for proof that I was your delegate to go to the public records training. And they have. And even though we discussed it publicly, we've never formalized it into a resolution. So now that's on tonight's agenda and will be on the standing authorizations every January going forward to make sure that we continue to recognize that fact. You know, we are on the same page that, you know, I go to the training for, for you guys. And you know, anytime there's a request, it always comes to my office anyways and, and make sure we're always compliant with that. So that was the purpose of that resolution on here tonight. Permanent appropriations, those are required to be approved by October 1st. I just finished those last night, actually. General, it's similar to what's forecasted in, in the five-year forecast. The only thing that was unusual is I have appropriation of budget of $3 million for the PI fund. Based, you know, we're starting to build a balance now in our, in our permanent improvement fund. We had about $800,000 some thousand dollars of leftover funds from last year. Plus about 2.4 million we received this year, which came up with the $3 million budget for this year. We don't anticipate spending that, but it's there for any overages that we need from the building project just to have that flexibility. Every time you change your appropriation, you get to file with the county and go through some paperwork for that. So I figured have the budget there that if we need to dip into those funds for any reason, we can do that without having to make budget divisions and file with the county. There's another resolution on tonight to, for Arbor Pay and to create an impressed fund. Basically Arbor Pay is a way to pay athletic officials, basically through the league. They have, you know, a signer for the league assigns all the officials to the individual games at each district. Most districts are using Arbor Pay and basically what is it? It's a faster way to pay the officials. The district's not cutting individual checks. The money, we deposit funds with the Bank of Utah through Arbor Pay. And then the athletic director would go on after a game occurs and verifies that the official that's assigned to the game was actually there and approves them for payment. So then they get paid through direct deposit through Arbor Pay. We're not cutting checks. We're not having checks lost. We're not having the issue checks. We don't have officials calling when I get paid. It's all handled through Arbor and they handle the 1099 process as well. So we don't have to handle that process at the end of the year. It's a transactional charge. I think it's the dollar eighty per charge for payment. You know, which isn't all that significant. You figure every time you mail a check is 48, 49 cents, whatever postage is these days. And the processing time of doing purchase orders and issuing checks and reconciling checks. And you know, then you have checks that don't get to cash to go to unclaimed funds and handling all that process. It kinda eliminates a lot of that legwork in our office. And the officials like it because they get paid much more timely than, than waiting for our next check. We also have, under Buildings and Grounds, a couple of items. One is the sale of a pickup truck that pretty much is not, no longer drivable. I think it was like the bed of the truck had dislodged from the frame and pretty much it's scrap metal at this point. And then, so we have an employee who made an offer to purchase that truck and we cleared it with legal. You know, that, you know, this truck's not really worth anything other than scrap metal and they wanted the truck to pull the engine out. So we have that resolution to sell that vehicle. And then we also have Madison Schools is buying two of our school buses. One's a scrap regular bus for $800 and then the other one's a, a special needs bus we no longer use for $4,400. They were looking for anything they can get their hands on and we had some extra laying around that we don't really need at this point. And then the other item that was added today was vehicle purchases for maintenance. The purchase of a transit van and the purchase of a Ford F-350. We had discussed these at the most recent Buildings and Grounds meeting. This is based on state term pricing. We have one maintenance employee who uses his personal car. That he, he has a bunch of tools in his trunk and we pay him mileage to drive around. He can't, it's not really useful for him. So one of the vehicles is for him to have on a regular basis when they're traveling between buildings. And then the Ford F-350 is for, it'd be able to tow the van trailer. It also has a plow for some of the business things allowing we do, you know, throughout the district. And that kind of pretty much replaces the, the truck that we're selling that was pretty much falling apart. And then the last thing on the agenda that was added last minute today was the snowplow contract for this year. The price is the same as last year. We were just tweaking some of the salt pricing because salt has gone up dramatically this year. So we kinda worked with the contractor and we have a set number of tons for salting. So that if it's a harsh winter and they're salting every day, there's a price involved with additional saltings. You know, just kinda protects them, protects us without having a major contract spike. We just kinda kept the terms as is, but then said, once we hit 300 tons of salt, then we'll pay the per salting charge, which is already broken out in the prices we did last year. Does that pretty much cover the, the salt contract?
Perfect.
We already talked about our PTA changes. Recycling update I'm gonna present to the finance committee because I haven't had time to review if I have pricing information and what that could look like. Also, the Treasury's Office, we implemented what's called Positive Pay. It's a fraud protection on our bank accounts. You know, we always reconcile our bank accounts every month and if anything funky were to happen or we get the fraud, we catch it and we reconcile. What Positive Pay is, is whenever we do a check run, we upload that to Huntington Bank. And so when someone presents a check to the teller or does the online deposit, it verifies that the payee and the amount matches what we say it should. And if it doesn't, it stops that fraud instantly instead of it coming out of our account and then we find out. Two weeks later, we go to reconcile that something's not right. Just an extra layer of protection in our bank accounts. We had this in our previous district and we had a situation where someone had created two $8,000 checks and tried to cash them against the account. And because we had Positive Pay there, it flagged it, you know, so we get an email that says, hey, this, this doesn't match what you uploaded to the bank. And we figured, found out it was fraud and filed police reports. I'm not sure if they ever caught the person that, that tried to make those fake checks, but it's just an extra layer. So we finally have that implemented here at Riverside. And then the five-year forecast seminar is October 4th and 5th. I'll be going there. Then getting the forecast updated hopefully in time for the finance committee meeting for, and then for approval in October. This is the last year. It's due in October. Starting next year, it's due in November. Which, you know, we'll probably still do it in October anyways, but we have an option to defer. Especially if the district has a levy on the ballot in November. It makes sense that the new deadline's the number 30th because your forecast could dramatically change if that's a situation.
That does make sense.
One other thing I wanted to mention, I do know again last minute, there was a change in the Crossroads contract. I know there's some questions some of the board members have over the delivery model that we're, we were presenting to the board. And just wanted the board to know that we've changed it where I think we're encumbering about $20,000 to provide at least very similar level services that we had from last year. Now last year's was, what was the amount for last year between January?
Twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand dollars from January to June. And we're looking to use $20,000 to continue at least some services that we have going right now to the end of the year while we're looking at a couple other delivery models. But I thought it might be at least somewhat of an idea to have at least a little bit of discussion about what some of the concerns are so we know what we're going to do in terms of searching for answers that you, you might have. I'm not saying like a big, long work session or anything else. But at least open up a little bit of the dialogue that we would need to, to move forward in looking at another possible model.
I actually think, like having somebody from Crossroads and having a number of people from Crossroads come and address the concerns or issues or whatever would probably be helpful because, I mean, you're talking about, you're talking about delivery of service. You're talking about billing. You're talking about, you know, possible insurance. You're talking, you're talking about multiple aspects of an organization that does medical billing and medical, not medical, but social services and behavioral health are, are come under the realm of health insurance and whatever. And I, I do feel like it's appropriate for us to have somebody here that can answer those questions from the organization so that they could address the concerns that we have.
So I can tell you, Belinda, the, the contract that I have at Crossroads, who is Lauren Wright, I did ask her. The billing, they do not bill any insurance companies, any parent's insurance companies privately. They do do the Medicaid billing. So they take care of that on their end. And then our invoice is, the reimbursement that they receive, our invoice is deducted based on the amount of Medicaid reimbursement received. But they do not do any personal insurance billing through the parent's insurance.
Through, through school. But they do do peer insurance billing when they're seeing private patients. And I know that because, I mean, I had my kid at Crossroads, so I, I get that. And with the fact that people's insurances cover social services and mental health services, they also cover, you know, a lot of employers have EAPs, which is why I said Riverside has, has an employee assistance program as well. And you get social services as part of that. This is why I brought up the questions that I had, but I'm not sure that the delivery model that we're using, that we should be paying for something that somebody's health insurance might possibly be providing coverage for. So I just wanna make sure that we're addressing that there might be alternate models that we could use. Maybe perhaps renting space to these people instead of paying them. They should be paying us for the, for the right to be in our facilities. I don't know what the answer is, but I would just like us to explore different options.
And I don't know who would do that exploration. When we get into the billing and the insurance aspect of it, that's not my area of expertise. I will tell you that my concern would be, and I understand what you're saying, but my concern would be the economically disadvantaged population that we do have in the district. And when we talk about billing and working with an agency and having students' needs be met through, whether it be private insurance, I would be concerned that that population of individuals' needs are not going to be met in that manner.
And, and Crossroads is 501(c)(3). They have funder, right, they have funders that do that. And that's the whole world of social service. And that is the, that's the work I've done for the past couple of years in the social service industry. So, so there's, you know, they bill on a sliding scale. They don't bill at all. They have funders who pay. So it's, it's just something that I feel like we should explore. And again, I don't expect, you know, people in a school district to be experts on the delivery of social service. I get it. Like we are not in the provision of healthcare benefits. And so I, I think that we could probably make some inquiries and have somebody who is more in tune with that help us decide, hey, what's the best model for us? Maybe, and I do realize that other school districts have the service and that they're providing it and the method that we want it to provide it. But, but maybe they didn't think about asking those questions either. So it's, it's not that I, it's not that I don't want to be providing those services to students because that's not, that was not where I was going with all that. You know, I want people to understand that that was not my intention. My intention is I think, you know, we have to step back and we have to ask those questions and maybe come up with something that somebody else is not doing yet, that nobody's thought of yet. So.
So just so moving forward, in, in terms of what's on tonight's agenda, we would need to, they need 60-day notice. We're gonna terminate our contract with them. So we would probably have to, if we're looking at like, I mean, the $20,000 is, is not going to get us to the end of the school year.
Right.
So we're looking at like the end of October where a decision's gonna have to be made one way or the other if we're going to discontinue these services mid-year or by semester break.
Okay.
That's a work session we have at Crossroads in here.
And I think it was a good stopgap. Like that gives us some time to do some exploring. It probably would have been ideal if we had, could have had this done prior to the start of the school year. But, you know, be that as it may, it's, it's.
Can we ask a question when you're done?
Yeah. It's probably, you know, this is a good stopgap for us so that we have some time to explore some other options.
And I didn't realize that there were these types of questions. This was really just a continuation of the services from last year. So, I mean, I don't even know if Lauren, my contact at Crossroads, is the right person to come, but I can certainly find out who that would be.
We were looking to establish another work session other than the one that we have in, like, November?
I mean, I think if we have to have a decision by October, by the end of October, we're gonna have to. Because otherwise, then there won't be a contract.
Let me just find a date that's.
Are we able to find those things that's available to come to our meeting? I mean, that's what we probably should start with.
Maybe, maybe we have them come to our finance meeting.
I can find out. I mean, I can certainly ask somebody. I don't think.
Check it out. We'll see if we can do the finance and what days they're available. When's our next one?
October.
October 17th at 7 a.m.
Maybe we can push that up a little bit, possibly?
What's it, 6 a.m.?
No.
That'd be fine with me.
So I have a question though. If we decide we're not continuing with our current provider, will, you will be looking into something to continue with our kids? Is that what you're saying?
And the, the, I think what we have on the agenda today is to continue what we have currently, the current model that we have right now, correct?
Yes, but again, that was from, that won't get us to the end.
Right. It doesn't get us to the end of the year, but it gives us, it gives us a continuation of current benefits until, so that we can have some time to, to.
Sort of cutting it off altogether and not providing the services allows us to continue to provide these services while we're doing our investigation.
I thought that's what you were saying. It, it makes us nervous because I, I had three conversations this week alone with parents who were pouring their heart out, just telling me that they were so grateful that we turned them in this direction because they don't always know how to find that. And when I say parents, sometimes that's not mom and dad, but that's grandma, grandpa, or somebody else taking care of a child. Who just, as it is, they're looking at their life and saying, I thought I was done raising kids. But now I am not only raising my grandchildren or my nieces and nephews, but I have no idea where to look for help. And they've, our provider has at least given us a way to help and also introduced us to even more resources in the community. I just attended a meeting this morning where I got even more information that I didn't even know was there. And I shared it immediately with some grandparents just today on the phone. So thank you so much for providing that to us for this past year. It has made a tremendous difference in the lives of our kids and also our teachers because they help educate our teachers and help our teachers understand that, like Michael was saying, when you wonder why some of these kids aren't at the table. And the old thought process was that these kids were bad kids. But now people understand that they have gone through something very traumatic that impacts their brain development. And they need help. They need an intervention. Sometimes it's only like six weeks, six sessions. But having that person there to say they need something deeper than. than what we can provide and then turning them on to those resources, it's been very helpful, so thank you.
And again, I don't, I don't want people to be thinking that, you know, I'm not for social services for our students because I understand the value of that. It's just that, again, those are, those are, we start to get, we start to cross the line where we get into the provision of medical services and the provision of behavioral health services that again are billable to insurance companies. And I want to make sure that we as a school district are spending our money appropriately and not paying for things that other, other agencies or other insurance companies or whatever would be paying for that service anyway. I want to make sure we're not paying for it and don't have to. So I think that's, it's, it's just something we need to explore.
I think part of it too, another thing is that we already have taxpayers are already paying for mental health care countywide.
Right.
And then we're asking them to use our tax dollars that they're paying to Riverside.
And they could also have insurance that's.
So I just want to say, this is part, and just so everybody, I know we have further discussion on this as well, but this is part of a state initiative as well. I mean, this, this ties into some of the mandates that are coming from the Ohio Department of Education. And we do have an obligation to address mental health needs of students in our schools, whether it be through the PBIS, I mean, this fits into that model as well, which is required by law. It is part of our Striving Readers Grant as well in addressing at-risk students. So, so there is a piece that becomes our responsibility. So however this unfolds, I mean, there is some obligation on our part and I get what you're saying about taxpayers. But even for students with disabilities, we have to treat the whole child, not just the academic needs. So social, emotional, and mental health needs have to be addressed through the IEP.
It's like, how, how, how many days is Crossroads in our school now?
They're currently at the high school one day a week. So for a campus of eighth through 12th grade, they're here one day a week and they're at the elementary buildings anywhere from a half of, half of the day, correct me if I'm wrong, to one day per week. We were, we were looking to increase that based on the needs and the referrals that were being made from.
You made a proposal for three days, why three, not two?
Because the needs up here, the campus being as large as it is, the needs and the number of referrals that were made by our own staff. So referrals are coming from our staff to Crossroads. We're not able to be met in one day. And they were also receiving a large number of referrals at the elementary level as well. Across all six buildings, surprisingly enough, I have the data of who was served last year and, and it's pretty consistent across all six elementary buildings.
Okay, with junior high, with our, our numbers where they are now, I spoke to Mrs. Long, she said there's, I believe, 50 students being counseled over.
I think she gave you end-of-the-year data. I believe that that's not the current data because the list that I received from Lamont was about nine students when I had asked for the information that were currently receiving either services or had just gotten consent for those services to be initiated.
So going forward, if we were to do two to three, three days, would that put us in line with other districts in there?
There's a lot of different models in terms of what other districts are doing. I mean, I can tell you the larger districts have full-time staff, you know, at their high school building. So, so it just depends. We had 86 students that received services from January to June last year across the district that included the high school and the six elementary buildings. That excluded Lamont because that did not, that we're not providing services at Lamont.
I tried to find some mandate through the state in regards, but I couldn't. Can you give the board any information?
I can, I can either provide you, I'd be happy to email you some of the information. There is, I believe it's House Bill 216 if I'm not mistaken. Oh, 318, I'm sorry, there's 216 and there is 318. But there's House Bill 318 that is just been signed by the governor and will be in effect on November 2nd of this school year. Which, which mental health, this is, this is a big component across the state. I mean, this is something that's being looked at, like I said, at the Ohio Department of Education level. I mean, there are trauma-informed schools that are providing, you know, very intensive services.
It's kind of where we need to be. I was talking to the administrators countywide about, you know, when you go to safety and security meetings, every time you go, every time I go to these, they talk about what happens after bullets fly. And my question finally is, well, what can we do before that? You know, and it's always goes from mental health and doing threat assessments and having that resource where you can refer kids.
I mean, I can tell you the types of issues that were being, students were being seen for last year. I could give you that information as well.
And statistically, 47% of kids who come to school have been exposed to at least one traumatic experience. So sexual abuse, physical abuse, lots of a parent witnessing a violent crime. And that, if you look at the research, really does stifle the development of their brain. So then when they're sitting in the classroom and, you know, next to me and he's had a great loving nurturing, like his brain is developing like this, but if mine, if I had something happen to me, then it slows my brain development down and then little things could trigger my behavior, you know. And that's what we're seeing with kids is they just can't, they have these obstacles that they just can't get past. Some of them just need a little bit of help, maybe somebody to talk to and to learn how to talk about what happened to them. But if they don't ever talk about it, they just push it down, down, down. And I use this analogy with my kids at school. If you don't tell us what's wrong and you don't express yourself, it's like a balloon, you know, it gets this big and then pretty, pretty soon it just pops and you don't know what's going to happen, you know. So I try to get kids to know that my office is a safe place and come and tell me so I can help you. But the, just the magnitude of the problems and the things that they are experiencing in their young lives, 22% of them experienced this before kindergarten. So I was just talking to my kindergarten teacher today, you know, we have 26 kids and the realm is like this. So you might have some who are developmentally so far past the others, that's not a bad kid that's hiding under the table. He's just never been to school, you know, he just, he may, his mother died. I mean, I have one in the class who lost his mother to a drug overdose before he was two. So he never really had the chance to attach. So it's just stuff like that and it's, it doesn't even matter socioeconomics, race, any background, these things happen. And it's our responsibility just to be able to recognize those and intervene early so that they don't become adults with these problems. So that's, that's why it's been so helpful. And I know I'm going on and on and on about it, but I, it's really close to my heart and I would love to share with you, I have a resource site for my teachers that just has curriculum, state mandates, whatever comes down the line, I put it on there. And I have a whole page with research articles about this and trauma-informed care. And Bruce Perry, if you ever have a chance to look him up, he does amazing research with brain development. There's a picture on there I have of a child's brain who came from a family where he received attention and love and was able to, you know, be with his mother. And then there's one with an orphan who never got to attach to his mother. And the frontal lobe of the brain looks totally different, the development is just completely different. And so he has all this research behind how you can actually turn that around. It's not a lost cause, it's just you have to know what to do and have to do it early.
I think, I mean, I think we're all on the same page, we just, we know the importance of all of this. We need to provide it to our, to our students. We just need a few weeks to kind of dig into it, see what we can do and have that meeting with finance and see if there's any other alternative or options that we might be able to employ. Otherwise, you know, we have to go back to the drawing board or modify what we have.
If I can, thanks, Trish. And, and so I do appreciate the contract that's on the agenda tonight that the board is considering because it is, it is at least continuing the services that have been already put in place this school year. As we work through this and try to come up with either another alternative plan or solution or whatever. And again, timeliness is going to be kind of an issue here, so.
Mr. Parker, what's on the agenda for, for this evening regarding that, the 128? How does that project in the long run for forecasts?
Well, the 128 is trying to reduce.
Yeah, it's down to 20,000. And I have a revised resolution when we get to that point that I'll read off. That's different from the, what's on the agenda. Right now, we're just approving up to the 20,000.
Right, so last year we had allocated $20,000 from January to June. We actually ended up, what was billed to the district was $13,806 because of the deductions and the reimbursements. So I was just trying to use that, that base amount to get us to half of the school year so we would have some, a little bit more time and opportunity to look into some other options and not have students' services being ceased immediately.
I think it's a good solution. Agreed. Is that it?
I have a couple more things real quick. I forgot where I started.
All right.
Well, for the Phase 2, the Architect RFQ is actually out, it's posted on the OFCC website. The legal notice will be in the paper before, either later this week or by Sunday in the News Herald and we're looking to get it posted in the link dealer as well. So then we'll, they're due back October 19th and then we'll kind of see what responses we get and set the time to interview the whoever applies for the architect and then go from there.
Is OFCC going to re-up our estimates?
They do, they will revise our plan and cost estimates and, you know, and I think, I think how it works is once we get to a point where we eventually qualify for funding, then I'll do, then we'll do enrollment studies and revise.
So that's not yet.
So that's, but they will do like a little bit of update and enrollment study sometime over the next six months. And then once we get that architect on board, we can kind of figure out what's the cost of Phase 2, what that looks like and then decide how we want to move forward, when we want to move forward or if we want to put it on hold or whatever we want to decide to do at that time. And then Minter Schools is actually on October 23rd, they're doing an auction of their three elementary schools that they've closed, three of them that are closed. I talked to Dan Wilson Treasure over there, I'm going to attend the auctions to see how they go through that process because we'll be going through a similar process about a year later, so I'm going to go with it there. And last thing, I'm just going to pass out an updated budget sheet for the construction project. It's oddly similar to the one that we did a few months ago. We're still at the same point basically, once you factor in our standing purchase orders and outstanding costs. You know, assuming we're, if we have to go through and demolish those three remaining schools, we're about $2 million over, if we're not having to demolish them, we're able to sell those facilities, we'll be, we'll have funds left over. So it kind of all depends on what happens with that. And the only thing I'll note is the contingency amount on the second page, you know, it does not factor in the change orders approved tonight. So once those get approved, they'll become purchase orders on the first page, you know, we reduce the contingency on the second page. So it'll, it'll just wash, so it's not going to make a difference. You know, we won't be, the budget really won't be changing until we exceed $600,000 in change orders and we're not, we're still $380,000. And I believe that concludes my report.
That takes us to part of participation. Anyone wishing to address the Board of Education will be recognized by the Board President. Speakers are requested to identify themselves and their topic, comments are limited to three minutes. That takes us to the consent agenda. We'll start off first with finance and audit.
So we have items, resolutions A through K, K, A through K on the finance and audit agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
We can read the donations, please. We have a donation from the Riverside Alumni Association to the Riverside Veterans Monument Fund. A donation from the Painesville Elks Lodge to the Riverside Veterans Monument Fund. A donation from Larry Middleton to the Riverside Veterans Monument Fund. Donation from Robert and Tammy Orlando to the Riverside Veterans Monument Fund. Also from the Sub-Zero Mission to the Monument Fund. Continuing, we have Veterans of Foreign Wars Department of Ohio Charities, Lee Roy Ohio, Ohio to the Riverside Veterans Monument Fund, from Deborah Lewis to the Irene de Moore Memorial Scholarship. From Ernest and Pamela Richmond to the Irene de Moore Memorial Scholarship. From Macy Family Dentistry to the Riverside Rocks 5K and from Painesville Credit Union to the Riverside Rocks 5K. So we'd like to thank those folks for donating to our different initiatives. Is there any other discussion on the finance and audit? If there is none, can we call the roll?
Steve Jeffries?
Aye.
Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
Jack Miley?
Aye.
Belinda Grassi?
Aye.
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Motion carrying.
And the next thing is the Crossroads item and this is the revised, the corrected resolution.
All right, so this is corrected resolution.
It's a little different what's written on the page, this we got a revised one from Dan about 6 o'clock today.
All right, so this is resolution, this is item M, I will read it. On the recommendation of the superintendent, the Riverside Local School District Board of Education hereby approves the service agreement with Crossroads, LCA CS Inc. in an amount not to exceed $20,000. A copy of the agreement with Crossroads, Inc. is attached and incorporated herein by reference. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Jack. Is there any other conversation on this agenda item, it's not the original one?
It's basically an extension of the previous agreement to get us through about the first half of this.
When you say first half, is that the first semester?
Yes. But again, a decision we're going to have to make.
Yeah, I'm just making sure because I think it should have been flagged first time.
You think what?
No.
And there's a 60-day termination clause in there, so whatever, if it's something we want to terminate, we have to give 60-day notice.
All right, well then if there's no other discussion on that item, can we call the roll?
Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
Jack Miley?
Aye.
Belinda Grassi?
Aye.
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Steve Jeffries?
Aye.
Motion carrying. Personnel?
Sure, we have items as recommended by the superintendent on the agenda, items A through.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. A through I.
I'll second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Then if there's no discussion, can we call the roll?
Jack Miley?
Aye.
Belinda Grassi?
Aye.
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Steve Jeffries?
Aye.
Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
Motion carrying.
Just want to congratulate the entire reason.
Yeah.
Steve Jeffries.
Curriculum programming?
Curriculum and programming recommendation, or a motion to approve the items listed under curriculum and programming consent agenda as recommended by the superintendent, A through E. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Yes, number B. Ms. Long, can you explain the tech program?
Good middle school, where? Okay, so if we are a district that is not going to provide specific middle school career tech courses, every year the board has to adopt a resolution that says we're not going to offer those classes. There are a multitude of requirements to provide the courses, one of which being you have to follow a specific pathway. And, and the course, so the course has to be the beginning course in a pathway that we provide our students. So we would be providing a course that directed students into only one particular career path in seventh, 30th grade. We don't have courses set up that way mostly because we don't have the staff to guide students into a specific area or career path at that age level. One of the other ways is that the course has to meet a certain number of hours. And in our, in our seventh grade especially, we don't meet the minimum number of hours because our courses meet for 12 weeks, not a semester. So there's a variety of reasons that we don't meet the ODE guidelines for a career tech course in middle school. But it doesn't mean that we're not providing career tech instruction to our students, especially through Naviance now, that program is expanding. What we're exposing our students to as far as getting out and seeing Auburn in the eighth grade or having speakers come in. So it's my feeling that although we don't provide what is in the ODE box of career tech, that we still provide multiple opportunities to expose our kids to different things to prepare them for that career exploration.
Thank you. Any other questions, concerns? Okay, roll call, please.
Belinda Grassi?
Aye.
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Steve Jeffries?
Aye.
Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
Jack Miley?
Aye.
Motion carrying. Buildings and grounds?
Motion to approve the items listed on the buildings and grounds consent agenda as recommended by the superintendent, items A through T. And most of those are the change orders that we reviewed and also the vehicles and, and other things. Is there any discussion?
I'll second.
I did jump to God.
I do have one question on the, on the purchase of the truck.
I do have one question on the, on the purchase of the truck and the van. That's replacing the truck that is currently pulling the van trailer, correct?
We will use that to pull the van trailer. I discussed that with Mr. Happer. It's also replacing a truck that we took for maintenance, an old 2012, to put out to the field crew who lost their truck to get it rusted out. I'm basically replacing what I had.
Okay. That's not gonna solve the issue of the van trailer not being sufficient to haul the stuff that we have, correct? We're still gonna have to take a bus.
Correct.
Okay.
I get it.
I just wanted, like, I just want to make sure I understand.
There was, with the old van that was pulling the trailer, from what I understood, there were some restrictions on how heavy it could push down on the, on the hitch.
Two weight issues, the trailer and then the van. You still have the trailer?
We still have the trailer issue.
Yes. Plus, those vans are on their later stages.
Right, okay.
Thanks.
Anything else? Can you call the roll, please?
Jack Miley?
Aye.
Belinda Grassi?
Aye.
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Steve Jeffries?
Aye.
Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
Motion carrying. All right, that takes us to the Board of Education update. If anyone has got anything?
I have one item. I wanted to mention that Saturday I had the opportunity to attend a memorial service for Donnie Anderson with a long-term coaching or student in our district. Very much a tribute, was very fitting of a man who impacted a lot of people in our district. And to be in the auditorium where so many people were to, to express their gratitude towards him was something that was very nice to be part of. And just, our thoughts first go out to the family as they cope with the loss of a father and a husband and a friend to many people.
Yeah, I attended the memorial service for 9/11 on the Painesville Square, and it was a terrific event.